Okay, I've called a meeting to a real call please.
Mrs. Belisca?
Here.
Mr. Gesarno?
Here.
Mr. Kaminsky?
Here.
Mayor Morgan?
Here.
Mrs. Joffrey?
Here.
Mr. Kogan?
Here.
Mrs. McKnight?
Here.
So then the flag?
I put allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public media, private castle, government, this county, Union State, New Jersey, have been raised as being given in accordance with PPL nineteen seventy-five, chapters two thirty-one, that an analyst or revision was made in conformance of section thirteen of the act. Um, yeah, correspondence, uh, uh, New Jersey D E P got a, uh, 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 discharge, uh, uh, permit for a swimming pool discharge, boulder engineering, uh, fresh lens, uh, permit for a continuing, continuing care retirement community up at five seventy-five mountain. Uh, New Jersey D E P, uh, suspected hazardous discharge at six hundred mountain and Orpan and Ernie LeCourgey, a board of adjustment, and Antonio Rivas Cortez, city of Summit, board of adjustment. Any comments? Seeing none, I declare that call correspondence done. We go to council business, media.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, authorization to basketball instruction, uh, seeking authorization to bid another three-year contract. Uh, current three-year contract ends on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. The contract allows the recreation department to run clinics and leagues throughout the year for children in grades K through eight. I think we've done that when we were younger. Um, authorization to bid bus transportation, seeking authorization to bid bus charter, bus services for the recreation department. The current three-year contract expires the seven thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. This contract allows the recreation department the ability to provide transportation for their popular teen venture camp for six weeks in the summer, as well as outings for the De Corso Center. We did that teen venture camp as well. Um, resolution twenty twenty-three, two oh six is a good one, really good one. A resolution authorizing the application for kids recreation trust fund grant for the borough of New Providence. Um, the Union County Kids Recreation Trust Fund Grant is an, an annual opportunity for towns in Union County to apply for funding that supports our recreation initiatives. For twenty twenty-three, the boroughs of New Providence is applying for matching grant funding in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars to build pickleball courts. We are hopeful that the county will fund some of this request and grateful for their support each year. Uh, the remainder of the project would be paid for by capital funds. Um, you know, we heard a lot of talk at the last meeting, and this is a great example of, of, of this council reacting to the, you know, the demand for, for permanent outdoor pickleball courts in New Providence that our recreation department, led by Allison, does an amazing job. Uh, they create tremendous programming in this area. For example, in the twenty twenty-three, the rec department will be adding two additional morning pickleball sessions in the municipal gym for a total offering of six in the morning and one in the evening. So the plan here is then to long-term, or to create a pickleball court, uh, courts, which should hopefully break down, uh, break ground at some time in twenty twenty-four. However, in the short term, I think in order to meet the demand for pickleball courts, I'd like to just get the council's consensus for our community activities department, uh, to continue to explore the possibility of working through the details and complexities of offering a more immediate solution involving the utilization of the court, um, one of the courts in our existing tennis facility. Uh, Councilwoman Joffrey and I had the opportunity yesterday to meet with Allison and Arlene in our community activities department to talk about this. I also think it may be a good idea to ask Allison or someone in her department to speak at an upcoming, maybe August, meeting of council, just about their progress and the details and complexities they're working through.
Uh, no, I think, uh, I think it's a great idea. Um, actually, I had the opportunity to play some pickleball, uh, uh, over vacation last week on tennis courts. It was, uh, it was actually, it was fun, and my kids picked it up pretty quickly. Um, yeah, I mean, we had a few people here last week, uh, last meeting, like you said, and I think, uh, if we can come up with something in the short term, right, as a temporary solution, I think that would be great. I know our recreation department does an amazing job, um, and their programming is top shelf. No one, no one's a bigger cheerleader than me. Uh, but the, the, um, temporary solution, I think, would be something that we should look into. And I know there's a lot of logistics that goes involved in that, so, so I'd be curious to, to hear back on that.
Yeah, actually, if I could just chime in. So what I thought was great about our meeting yesterday is that, um, you know, they are very anxious to expedite the process, to get the process moving as quickly as possible, and that we do have, um, we do have some ideas around short-term permanent solutions. Not in as much temporary solutions, but permanent solutions that can be done in the short term that we are looking to expedite.
It's a great point.
And get out there as soon as possible. So not just temporary, but permanent solutions that can be done more so in the short term that we've already funded for in the capital budget from last year. So, um, in either case, you know, by this time next year, we should be able to stay ahead.
That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, finance?
Um, engineering.
Oh, sorry, Alex.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash two oh seven, resolution amending resolution twenty twenty-three dash one hundred, entitled resolution authorizing an agreement between the Borough of New Providence and the Borough of Madison for construction inspection services. This resolution seeks to amend the wording in their original agreement. The D C A Regulatory Affairs has requested that the shared service agreement between the Borough of Madison, uh, regarding courtesy construction inspection services be revised to title the document as a, quote, mutual aid agreement, rather than the current heading. Uh, the only changes are in the heading and the line two of the first whereas clause, which now reads mutual aid agreement.
Okay. Finding a tweezers.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so tonight we have the introduction of ordinance twenty twenty-three oh five. This is bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements in and by the Borough of New Providence in the County of Union, New Jersey, appropriating two million eight hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars, therefore, and authorizing the issue of two million seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollar bonds or notes of the borough to finance part of the cost thereof. So, um, this is just an introduction of the bond ordinance for some of the capital improvement projects under the capital budget. Uh, so just a little background, as you recall, there's two components to the municipal budget, the operating budget, which was adopted earlier this year, and the capital budget. The operating budget is a financial plan for the upcoming year that is forecasted expenditures and income, while the capital budget looks at planned large expenses that have a longer anticipated life expectancy. Uh, the capital budget is a long-term projection, and it's a planning document that outlines projects and equipment that need attention. Just so just you know, it's got a long-term focus, it's forward-looking, it's proactive versus being reactive. Um, the last thing we want to do is, um, be chasing, you know, costly repairs uh, that will cost the borough additional dollars as opposed to if we had planned ahead, like we're doing now. Um, the capital budget project, projects are ones that are needed, and they're necessary, and that they benefit the majority of our residents. So what we're currently appropriating is two point seven million in, uh, bond anticipation notes for these projects. The ordinance itself does not call for the issuance of the bonds until the money is needed to complete the project. As we do have some dollars in the capital account, actual borrowing may or may not happen. And the reason we are not securing the money at this very second is because before the projects even take place, every underlying expense is carefully reviewed and sent out to bid for the most affordable option as part of the standard bidding process. Any approval for actual spending happens as resolutions. It's presented before the council at the time of the project, and again, may or may not happen depending on the current economic environment. So the best analogy that I could think of this would be a homeowner who's planning, uh, projects, maybe around their house, has saved up the dollars for it, but is also going to go and get a home equity line, just to be on the safe side. So the home equity line, like the band, may or may not be needed, but is available, um, if it is. So, uh, the ordinance itself does have a list of the capital projects that we're looking at. Uh, some of, and I'm just going to give a couple of examples, they're broken up by departments. Um, in the engineering department, we have, you know, the Division Avenue project that we talked about last week that includes draining, paving, and all the work and necessary material. Uh, of course, public works, we've got all the streets and road programs. We have, um, I thought this, we have an addition of a leaf vacuum under public works. Of course, the wastewater treatment plant, which is a, a, a critical operation in our borough, and we need to keep a tip-top shape, does have a couple of projects in the capital plan. And let's see what else. Uh, for recreation, we have, uh, some playground equipment at Lions Park. The EMS is waiting for their stretcher, so hopefully we'll get that one done soon. Um, and that's it, but the list is available, it's in, it's in the ordinance, uh, that is attached to the, uh, the agenda.
And actually, I'd like to just chime in for a minute. Um, I was on the capital committee, and I just wanted to, um, share some information as well. So when we look at our capital budget, we have, we look at it in five-year chunks. Um, we are forward-looking and looking at every department. So every department comes in and they say, okay, this is where, where we're at, this is what we believe we are going to need, um, over the next course of a couple of years. So again, as, as Lisa said, we are looking at things on a proactive basis. We're not going to respond to something, we're not going to wait for something to break down to then just go out and try to urgently replace it. So the capital budgeting process allows us to be forward-looking and forward-thinking. Um, it also allows us to, um, map things out over time. Again, our goal is not to have tax swings, and if you go out and you have to buy something urgently, that will, would cause that to happen. Um, and then the other thing to think about is at the time of the actual expenditure, we're not going to say, okay, this is definitely going to happen. We are going to review at that time and look at the environment and make sure that the environment is correct to be doing that. Um, should the project move ahead, um, with the responsible course of action? Does the project cause any detriment, safety concerns, or issues? If we delay the project, will it have negative impact on the borough? And is there any economy of scale that we can get in on any other projects underway? So again, the purpose of this is to be proactive and to look ahead, and it's a five-year capital plan, which is something we should be really proud of, that we are planning and looking ahead. And I just want to share that. So when we sat with, um, Bernadette at the beginning of the year, we went through all of the requests from all of the departments, and we made a list, and we analyzed, again, this is something we need, not necessarily something that we want, but everything that we look at is based on need. And that's how this capital budget was put together. I see Jim has come in, I don't know, is there anything else that we left out that you think we should be including? Perfect. So thank you for coming, your timing was perfect. Um, so that's basically how the capital budget is put together.
Great, thanks, Nadine. Um, but the next resolution is twenty twenty-three dash two oh eight, and this is simply a transfer resolution authorizing the transfer of seventy thousand dollars in the budget appropriation from Terminal Lead Line to the Reserve for Terminal Line. And that's it. Oh, I got one more. Oh, I got the big one. You got, you got to pay the bills this month. Um, resolution twenty twenty-three dash two oh nine is a resolution arising payment of the bills payables. Uh, the amount is four million four hundred and ninety thousand three hundred and four dollars and forty-six cents. The significant items include, which is pretty much the entire list of bills payable, is the board of end for four million eighty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. Uh, we have our monthly library, uh, payment of ninety-three thousand three hundred, and then we have the final payment for the wastewater treatment plant's mechanical bar screen. Um, and this is paid with capital funds, and that was eighty-two thousand six eighty-four. I know, didn't Anthony send us some pictures of that, that screen in action? So, thank God. They don't have to break it anymore. Really bad, so that's awesome that that's.
Okay, Lisa, come in.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution twenty-three dash two ten is a resolution of the Borough of New Providence extending affordable housing restrictions on certain existing affordable housing units in the Murray Hill Farms condominium development. And it's basically a resolution extending the affordable housing controls on thirteen units on Timothy Field um, through two thousand fifty-four. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash two eleven, very similar, is a resolution of the Borough of New Providence extending affordable housing restrictions on certain existing affordable housing units in the South Gate at Murray Hill condominium development. And it's a resolution extending the affordable housing controls on two units on South Gate Road through November eleventh, twenty, uh, fifty-four. And, uh, just to echo what, uh, Nadine said about, um, the capital budget, this is our department, um, being proactive and, uh, extending these for another thirty years.
So if I'm not mistaken, right, this is up, twenty twenty-four, we extended it thirty years. If we don't do that, we lose the affordable unit, right? So we're, we're actually continuing to keep affordable units in, in the borough, which is great.
So that would be fifteen units, exactly. And kudos to Margaret.
Yeah. Okay, personal, Matt.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So resolution two twelve, two thirteen, and two fourteen, a resolutions approving labor contracts for the Borough of New Providence with the Patrolman Association of P B A Local One Thirty-two for the period January first, twenty twenty-three, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. This is for our patrolmen, sorry, our sergeants, as well as our, uh, superior officers. So as you remember, last meeting, we had approved a memorandum of understanding, those were all the negotiated terms, and this is the actual contract, uh, in resolution form. Uh, resolution two five, two one five is a salary resolution. This resolution, uh, increases the salaries of all of our full-time and part-time, uh, employees, uh, by point five percent retroactive to January first. This was matched the increase that we gave to all of our, um, union bargaining, uh, uh, units. Uh, as you know, we accounted for this two and a half percent, but we gave a two percent because we didn't know where we were going to land, right, in the budget, so, uh, this is, uh, basically getting it back to that two and a half percent, which is, is great.
Okay. Public safety, resolution two sixteen is residence for Mary Iannelli as a crossing board, and we want to thank her for her, uh, service to the borough. Uh, Alex, public works.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution, uh, two seventeen, resolution authorizing the application for greening Union County twenty twenty-three grant for the Borough of New Providence. This is an application to the county for greening Union County grant in the amount of twelve hundred dollars, with a matching amount of twelve hundred dollars coming from the tree replacement trust account. Uh, resolution two one eight, resolution approving partial payment number two for Riverview Paving, Inc., in the amount of four hundred sixty-eight thousand seven hundred eighty-nine dollars and two cents for the N J D O T F Y twenty twenty-two Fairmount Road, Bromley Court, and Woodgrass Drive Improvements Project. This is authorizing the payment number two to Riverview Paving for the N G T O T work. Uh, to date, all the work has been completed to the satisfaction of the Borough Engineer.
Okay, we have committee reports. Uh, operations are normal for our public safety, but I do want to say that, uh, I think we all know that the fireworks were canceled on the third, on July third because of the impending weather, even though we didn't see it, bad storms are just north and just south of us, so, uh, it's going to be safe and sorry. And so they will be Thursday night after the concert here, which is seven to nine, the concert. And then you can walk over to South Street and watch the fireworks if you, uh, so desire. Um, and also National Night Out will be on August first, which is the first Tuesday, and that will be held right out here, uh, and, uh, it's always a good time for, so, and it's all I have. Diane?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a lot of operations normal, but, uh, communication, the website was launched on July fifth. Um, thank you again, and kudos to the borough staff who worked really hard, many of whom are our neighbors and our friends. And, um, they worked really hard to migrate everything over and did a lot of behind-the-scenes work that we don't see. Uh, one of the best features that I want to remind everybody about is the notify me button. Um, customize notifications per user, you can get texts or emails, and do not forget to create an account to make your life easier. Um, my understanding, there have been a lot of, uh, positive comments about the notify me button, um, and the, the look of the website, so just remember to work in progress, and we continually update it. And that's kind of it.
Yeah, no, I was just going to mention, Thursday is a great night coming up, so everyone get ready for the fireworks on the, the concert. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Matt?
So the, the, the planning board meeting was canceled, the last planning board meeting was canceled. I know we had a question that, in, in the last meeting, um, related to, and, and item that you had brought up for a discussion for the planning board, um, and whether or not it was heard. So I just wanted to give a little clarity on, on the process with the planning board. So the planning board meets twice a month. It's usually the opposite Tuesdays of our council meetings. We will have a meeting if there's an agenda item, if there's an application that's in for, um, an actionable, uh, uh, application within, within the borough. Um, at this time, we don't have any applications that are outstanding, right? Uh, so the meetings have, have been canceled. Now, the, the discussion item that the mayor had brought up related to the, uh, recent master plan and some of the, uh, things that we had approved in the master plan earlier this year, those discussion items will be picked up at the next planning board meeting, uh, once we have an application discussed. And there's another reason, uh, there's, if there was another reason to meet would be if an application had timing of the essence, meaning that if they needed to have the meeting, uh, in order to satisfy a timing requirement. So, uh, there's none of that outstanding at this time either. Uh, so to have the meeting for the discussion item would mean we'd have to pull in all of our planning professionals, our engineers, our lawyers, uh, to have the discussion item, which costs money, costs taxpayer money. So the discussion item will be, uh, and it's not a timing of the essence issue, right? There are no applications, and if an application does come in that is related to the discussion item, we wouldn't hear that discuss, we wouldn't hear that application at that meeting anyway. That me, that application would go through an entire process of going through our planners and our engineers, um, through the borough, and that would take sometimes weeks, months before it even hits the planning board, uh, meeting. So, uh, so just wanted to clarify and just make sure everybody understood why the planning board hasn't, uh, met over the last few months, and typically the summer months are slow, applications are very few and far between. A lot of people spend the summers, you know, vacationing and, and not worrying about construction jobs, uh, around their homes. So, uh, I hope that helps, is there anything to add or any?
Oh, thanks, thanks for that update, Matt, that, that's, that's good. Um, so the next time they do meet, that will be on the agenda, I'm assuming.
It'll, it'll be a discussion item.
Okay, yeah. And then, uh, Matt's important because I'm sure it's an issue that, you know, it'll be well-publicized in the community that, you know, a lot of people might want to weigh in on. Very good, thank you.
Operations normal in my committees, uh, but just wanted to highlight, we have a new sculpture down in the park, um, Veterans Park, so check it out, it's called Squirt. Uh, we met the art, Lisa and I went, we met the artist, and, um, she did that all by hand. So she welded that, and, um, she was very interested in the topic.
Trying to picture her wielding, you know.
Wielding a blowtorch. With her goggles on, um, but, you know, very passionate about her craft, and she came from, uh, New York State um, and told us all about how she put it together and her inspiration, and it was great. So thank you, our public artists, for continuing to bring, um, great artists' plays to town. But that's it for me, other than that.
Alex?
Uh, nothing more, as mentioned already, that bar screen installed at the wastewater treatment plant. Anthony was very proud to send the video through, uh, Bernadette.
Made my day.
Made everyone's day, so as, as Diane said, it eliminates the manual, um, with the shovel.
The rake.
The rake, exactly, so.
Okay, Lisa.
Um, so the library is well underway in their transition to the main consortium, which is, which is exciting and good news. Um, I will have a little bit more information at the next meeting, but there, part of the transition is they're going to have to shut, like, their systems down, so there's going to be a couple days sporadically where they have to close. Those will be posted well in advance, um, so that the tech teams can come in and, and do what they, what they need to do. So we'll have more detail on those dates at the next meeting. Um, I also just wanted to point out as part of the finance committee that, um, the, these past couple weeks, we, so last year, we went out for a, um, a series of bond anticipation notes for our operating budget. Uh, as we know, the bond, uh, the, the bands are one-year terms, so coming due this summer. We had, we went out and got some bids to renew it. Um, part of that process was to get, um, some of the rating agencies to reaffirm our triple-A bond rating, which they did, which was great news. So we were very successful in getting, securing some bids. And I just want to note that this is like, so when we do the, the operating, uh, budget presentation, we talk in hypotheticals, right? So we say, you know, a triple-A bond rating will yield this type of rate and save us six dollars versus a B rating. But that, well, so here's a real-life example. This is our bond anticipation note that we went out and renewed, um, with a triple-A bond rating, and just within that triple-A bond rating, we secured several bids. Now, with that bond rating that we have, we're able to get bids from many different financial institutions, right? So with a B rating, you might get one or two people that actually want to participate. With the triple-A, we had a slew, so we were able to choose the best, uh, interest rate on that. So what we did end up with was a three-point-five percent interest rate. So just between that and, um, the next one, which was at like three-point-eight, if you look at net interest cost, it saves us about eighteen thousand dollars, and that's within the triple-A bond rating. That's not even saying, you know, if it was a B, um, if a B or, or lesser, so I think that's all good news there. Just a real-life example of.
Right, and, and that's just one year, right?
That's just one year.
That's just one year, and this is, is, we, we talk about during the budget process, right? You know, that affects long-term, right? Some of our bonds, when we got the bond, our rates for bonds of that nature that are longer-term, right? And, and compounded, uh, significantly saves taxpayer money. That's great news, great news.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a few things, um, with all of the weather that we have been having, D P W is really trying to stay on top of cleaning out the storm drains, but if you have one by your house and you can help them out, it helps everybody out. So if we can keep those clean, that would be great. Um, I have a pre-construction meeting tomorrow, uh, for the sewer lining project that's going to be starting around town, so I would urge our residents to check the website, check Facebook for possible road closures associated with project. Um, P S E N G continues their glat, gas line replacement, um, hopefully that will be coming to an end soon. And New Jersey American Water is starting work, uh, for water main replacement on Osborne, Vista, Birch, and Walton. Um, some of those streets, we have recently paved, um, and right after we paved them, I think, on Osborne, we three water main breaks immediately following the paving. Um, so the water company is responsible for curb-to-curb on those streets, so anything that's being ripped up that was previously paved for us in the last five years, they'll replace. That's all I have.
All you're talking about, Rose, I just want to compliment you and Drake, the engineer, and Ralph, everybody involved. You did a spectacular job this spring with, with paving, and you go around town and it, it, it's, it's truly amazing. And I know you have more going on in the fall, so.
So one thing in addition to the paving, uh, Ralph just, uh, did the purchase order for the striping that has to take place. So some striping was completed, if, if the gas company, um, was responsible for that street, their striping is already done. Ralph is in the process of getting our strippers in. Um, fortunately for us, um, the striper who was in town today, um, mistook what his job assignment was and striped Gales Drive for us, so that's a freebie.
Yep, that one's not on us.
Oh, well.
Nice.
I hate when that happens. Okay, we have public comments, anybody wishing to address council? Sure. Hello, Alan.
Hi, good evening. Alan Swanson, Forty-seven Overhill Road. Um, I'm, I'm going to talk, talk about some little information, uh, hopefully help you out. Um, how many of you have, uh, electric cars? Very good, okay. I do, and you will someday. Um, in California, they, uh, in twenty thirty-five, they will no longer be selling combustion engine cars. In New Jersey, uh, we will be doing the same in twenty thirty-five. It's not official yet, but by July. It's not official yet, but by January, it should be announced. And in 2035, you will not be able to purchase a combustion engine car at a car dealership in New Jersey. What does that mean? That means that the demand, obviously for electrical vehicle chargers, will increase, there'll be a huge increase in the demand. So what do you need to do? You need to plan. I, I appreciate that you are aware of this and that it is an issue that has been talked about. I know that in December, at the planning board meeting, it was discussed during the meeting. And there was some talk about getting level-three chargers. Little, quick little piece of information. A level-one charger is you plug it into your outlet in home. It's basically what I do at this point because I don't drive that much and I'm okay charging overnight. Charges at about two miles per hour for the charging of 110. The other is a level-two, 220. Charge anywhere from 20, up to about 20 miles per hour if you get in the charge. The fast chargers that people talk about, the level threes, they're charging at over 80 kilowatt-hours, some, some hundreds of kilowatt-hours per hour at a rate. So that if I go to a fast charger, in 20 minutes, I can charge 50% of the capacity, hundreds of miles I can put on. And one thing that was brought up by Councilman Kaminski at the meeting was that concern about putting in the chargers and that if they were on borough property, that the borough would need to pay for the electricity and that there might be people from outside town who were using it. I don't know of any place where, when I go to Target or go to someplace where the place that provides the parking space is paying for the electricity. I, on my car, I'm getting it paid for by free, for free, for three years at certain, as an incentive to buy the car, I get it for free for three years. And at others, you pay. At a level-three charger, roughly will actually cost you close to what it would cost you right now, close to what it would cost you to fill your gas tank. So that's, so, and level-three chargers, the other thing is that they're not, they're not something that, that you put into downtown. They're really for longer trips. I'm hoping to take a trip to Florida, and I will need to stop and do my 20 minutes to half an hour a few times going to Florida to see my children and grandchildren. So there's really not an issue that you're having to pay electricity on virtually any of the charging systems that you might consider. And recently, I have been in contact with Councilman Cogan and about this issue. And I'm, I'm very pleased to hear his response, that they're working on it, that they're seeking to get a couple of level-two chargers. And he indicated that it's a very tedious job that might take a long time because they're trying to get grant money in order to put them in. So my purpose tonight is, today, I, I went down to Westfield to, to look at what they're doing down there. And I don't know how many of you are aware of, there is a system, a, put out by a manufacturer called Volta. Used to be owned by Volta, but they were purchased by Shell. They, when I went there, and I'll, I'll give you this, this just shows the pictures of today.
We know it well.
That's, that's my.
One of the problems, Alan, just, just to mention Volta, is they make their money by selling the advertising on, on their screens.
Absolutely.
And we have some ordinances in town that probably will prevent us with, with this particular manufacturer.
I, I'm bringing it up. I, I'm really only bringing it up as a, to point out.
Sure.
That there are creative ways other than trying to find a grant because the demand is coming. Whether you get the grant ever or not, the demand is coming.
Absolutely.
And, and, and if need be, I think that you might be open to changing ordinance if you had to.
Yeah.
If it was something that worked.
I, I can shed some light on, on this topic for you, unless you're, are you finished or?
I, I just, well, I, I am. I just wanted to bring that up as something that, and, and I anticipated that you were going to tell me that you've looked into it.
Well, I couldn't agree more with you on the level-three versus level-two. Level-three is definitely for the long trips. It requires so much electrical infrastructure. I don't think that's in the borough's near future at the moment. Who knows, things might change. But level-two is definitely the option we're, we're considering right now. There are a few businesses that have been putting in these level-two chargers for free. In fact, NBC Suites Grain and Cane, not to, not to give them a plug, no pun intended, I guess. They, they do provide charging stations there for free if you, in their parking lot. But they're having the same problem a lot of places do by not charging. There's no idling chargers. So people, normal people park there or people leave their Teslas there, and there's no reoccurring, there's no goodwill for the next person to be able to charge, which, which is a problem at the free ones.
I have not, I, I have not, well, I have not gone to free ones.
Yeah.
Although today, there, there weren't, there wasn't anybody.
Yeah.
Westfield.
Correct, correct.
And Westfield has six of these, the chargers that you're looking at. And they do, they are free, and they are free because they provide advertising space for, for people. So I just bring it up as just, you know, to keep in mind, and I, and I did anticipate that you were aware of it, but I thought it was important to just, you know, bring it out there as that there are options to look at because it's coming. It's, it's.
Definitely.
It's going to happen.
Just to let you know, I think that I had mentioned this at a meeting previously. Mr. Murphy, MP Fuel, he is, that's his business. He's looking to the future, and he has been looking into this. This was at one of the DID meetings, I think it was, in first quarter. Yes, I mean, he's looking into it, so it's not far behind.
I, I can tell you, just if you look at that picture of where I was charging, I guarantee that if, if, if it was permitted by the ordinances, that the traffic that exists, pedestrian traffic, getting out of the cars in front of the ACME over by CVS is probably 50 times what the traffic is at this look over and at this particular location in Westfield. And there are six locations. And, and it's important to realize that at this point in New Providence, there really are virtually no accessible level-two charging stations that are in the downtown area that someone, and it was brought up at the meeting in December, the planning board meeting, where it would be good to be able to have those so that people can go, put their car there to charge for an hour. It's a two-hour limit in Westfield. And then go and, and go to a restaurant or what have you in New Providence. And it's gonna be important to.
I think, as you mentioned, Alan's coming in, in 2030, 2035. And I, I definitely, just like with the plastic bag ban, I could see the state eventually mandating that new construction or new parking facilities with X amount of cars are gonna have to be required to happen, so.
Sometimes they're, they are doing that.
We, I think we did that with Lant Hill as well, when, when, for their new facility.
And as an aside, at the one-year anniversary of the bag ban, the low estimate of how many plastic bags were taken out of circulation after one year was 8 billion in New Jersey, just in New Jersey. And that was the low estimate based on just some statistics that they put together in terms of survey. So I appreciate it. Mayor, Mayor Morgan, I want to compliment you on your Warburg time.
Couple things. Lisa, thanks for the list again on the expenditures. But as a practice, can we attach a list because it says it's attached to the resolution?
So we're, we're looking at it right now, John.
Well, then you shouldn't put it in, is my whole point.
It's actually in the resolution, isn't it?
No, it's not. No, it's not.
It go, it gets attached to the resolution after.
I pulled it up before I came here.
No.
It says the list.
Not this one.
My, my point is, don't put it in the, in the, I pulled this up before I came over here. So don't get in there and say there's a list, when there is no list.
Okay, I'm trying to explain.
Go ahead.
We, the attached list is for the council people to look at. It's not public record until we pass it.
Okay.
And then it'll be attached tomorrow or whenever you guys post it.
It, it's fine. It's confusing, is my whole point. So don't put it in the resolution, just say in your, your final.
Well, the resolution is a document for council when we're, but I, I understand your, I understand your point.
Moving on, moving on.
Okay.
So.
Semantics, is that what we're talking about?
No, it's not semantics. It's not semantics. Section 212, or Resolution 212, 13, and 14, which are the resolutions for the contracts that you recently negotiated. The resolutions are here, but the contracts aren't. So how do we see the contracts? Because I don't know what was passed other than the resolution.
Okay, so just to answer that.
Lisa, let me jump, jump in, please. The contracts do not become public until they are approved and signed.
By?
You see them, they pass a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the contract.
Okay.
Until that contract is signed, it is not a public document. Once it is signed, it's a public document, and you're free to examine it. You're free to come here and question it at that point. But until that point, it's contract negotiation.
But wouldn't you want to tell the constituents what you're approving? Because there's no mention of what the increase is. It's not, you don't, you don't have to see the whole contract, but wouldn't you want to see, I mean, I'm curious what was passed?
John, we, we had the memorandum of agreement on the agenda a few months ago. And they, they did go through all of that, exactly what the increase was. This is the final document that included what's in the memorandum of agreement.
The last thing is the bond that you mentioned, and it's kind of like a municipal HELOC. Is that weird?
Well, I'm just, it's an analogy of.
I get it, I get it. But my question is, in order to issue that, you have to have an official statement, right?
Yes.
So is there a place to get the official statement? For all of them?
The official statement is for the bands that will be closing next week.
Right.
After that's done and the closing takes place, you see the official statement. The official statements are for the, for the financial institutions that bid.
No, but I say, but they have to be fully ignored to be issued because the bond's a buyer of the bond. It's official statement. So then the rates that you talked about, so the rates were, you've got not seven bonds, I'm gonna do on the 27th, right?
Well, it's nine million in bands.
Right.
Better to talk about it as a total dollar, not the individual orders.
Okay, fine. But the rates that you were quoting, was that for the, the new band or the existing?
The new ones.
Okay. And these are preliminary rates, so now final.
These are rates that we were, we were quoted, and so we are.
So you have them closed?
So yes, we're gonna close on the 26th.
Okay.
Good evening. Kathleen Dolan, 12 Laurel Drive. I have two topics I'd like to speak to tonight, but first, I have a question about the discussion on safety from the June 27th meeting. Has there been any dialogue with Police Chief Hen about this topic?
Not at this time.
Okay, is it planned or?
We have a public safety meeting we could talk about.
Okay, so that's the committee that it would fall under. Okay, I wasn't sure. Okay, so the first topic is related to the new borough website and specifically the contact us options. But first, I really want to acknowledge all the hard work and effort that it took to put this new update out. It's much brighter, it's a cleaner display, and the information is bucketed in a nice, very nicely organized way. And as a resident who frequently uses the website to contact the borough with questions and comments and people I've spoken to in the community who use the Action Line as well, I just wanted to bring up a few things that I've noticed. And they're not urgent issues, but there's just some confusion. So if you had submitted an Action Line before the new update went out, you can't access, there wasn't a requirement to have an account to be able to submit that. But now you can't retrieve the status of, on your issue unless you're creating an account. So, and you can't actually, with the new website, you can't submit a new citizen request tracker report unless you set up an account. So an account is a requirement now? It wasn't a requirement before. So it should be.
Still need to provide your, your email address in order to, to put in an Action Line? Do you have to create an account?
You have to create an account now.
You still need to use the same information to put in the Action Line?
I understand, but you know, you've got a password, and so you need your user ID and your password. It's an account, like you actually have to log in each time. Where before, if you didn't want to create an account, which was my next question, say you don't want to create an account, how do you, how do you work it to, to get a citizen tracker request in? Because you're just shown a create an account screen if you don't have an account already. So you could also like click on, like, contact me and like look for a phone number or an email or something like that. But I know you're trying to encourage people to use the system, so making it hard for them to find some other way if they don't have an account seems like a little, it's not very user-friendly.
I actually think creating an account is, is, I encourage more people to create accounts than not to create an account. You create an account, you can sign up for all the notifications, like all the bells and whistles, right? So it's a better, it's a better.
I'm a big fan of that, but I know there's a lot of people that don't use computers that way. You know, either they just don't have the access or, or they don't have the ability of using them that way. So I'm just bringing it up because even people who do use computers, like I was confused when I first went in there. So just for the future updates, which I know you're constantly tweaking and, and improving, that's just one example of where, as a resident, if future updates, it would be a good idea to have people from the community who aren't on the borough side to take a look at it and use it normally would to see if there are things that pop up that you wouldn't have otherwise expected. For example, the, I know you can subscribe to the calendar electronically, and it goes into your Google or, so that link was broken when the new website came out. So now you have to go in and resubscribe to everything, which is fine. But it's a step that I wasn't expecting to do. So anyway, again, it's a, lots of good news, and then there's some other things that I think maybe we could have avoided. The second item is a proposal for all of you to consider. And as you all know, we had all the best intentions and lots of work was done to have a tricentennial celebration in our town in 2020. And I was one of the leads on the committee. I was as disappointed as everyone else when it had to be canceled due to the pandemic. And as the pandemic dragged on, there's never seemed to be a clear window to get it restarted. But I've recently talked to some residents who were involved in that, and there is interest in trying to reschedule it. So my suggestion is to hold it in the summer of 2026, which is also the 250th anniversary of July 4th. Would be New Providence's tricentennial plus six birthday. But actually, making a plan to do that three years from now would give us a lot of time to plan. We could maybe do it over a couple of days, even though July 4th falls on a Wednesday, I think, next year. But it's something to be considered, so I'd like to put that forward to the mayor and council and see if you would think about how we could get that underway.
I think it's already. Yeah, actually, Historical Society is already talking about it. And as a council, we've already talked about the 250th anniversary. It's a great idea to incorporate our, you know, our birthday too. It's a great idea to incorporate our, you know, our birthday too. But I was floating actually to other council members about creating an ad hoc committee that probably the Historical Society would take the lead, but we would want the beautification committee to be involved. So that's already in the works and we've been thinking about that. So I will put your name down.
Yes, sign me up.
Helping.
Very good, that's all I have.
I just want to just address the, the website real quick. So I think we'll ta, we'll take that back, right? I think maybe we'll, we'll take a look at to see if you don't need to create an account or not, but yeah, I think it's a stretch to say that that's a real difficult thing for people to do.
I remember Cindy, honestly, I remember Cindy, we had brought up that issue. Cindy had said something, I don't remember exactly what it was, but also on the website, on the bottom of helpful links, there's a contact us directory, so there's every single phone number there. I can't.
If you, if you don't want to, if you don't.
So you, there's phone numbers that you can actually call too.
But, but to say that people don't like computers or people don't use computers, I mean, it's a stretch.
Saying, say, there are some, there are some, no, no.
Everyone has cell phones.
No, they don't.
Well, how are they accessing the website in the first place if they don't?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, they have a cellphone or a computer, right? That's how they're accessing the website.
But then how would they?
But then why would they worry about whether or not they have an account?
Using the website.
I'm lost. No, my point is, my point is, again, accessing the website, creating an account, I did it once. And every time I log in, if I, if I wanted to sign up for something, my, my information's pre-populated. It's awesome, I don't have to redo it over and over and over again. So I don't know why someone would not want to do that, is my point I wanted to make.
But, but as Diane said, we definitely had discussions on it.
But we'll take it back and we'll address it and we'll look at whether or not.
I'll look at my notes.
And if you just want to put on that screen, don't want to make an account, click here and you get the list of all the phone numbers. You know, that's another option.
Some of the modules are specific to Civics Plus.
Okay.
So.
You can't play with those.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like I wanted to put something on the calendar that, you know, that references our wonderful calendar, our print calendar that I love so much. But it couldn't be done because it's not in that module.
Okay.
So. Okay, well, you guys, you know, you're figuring out some things and the residents are figuring out some things, but we should be sending them in if we find more things, we send them in.
Yeah, I'd encourage you to, to send emails into, you can email anyone on council, you can email the borough administrator.
Okay, one, I'm sorry, one more thing.
Talk to someone directly.
With the paving that's gone on, if you, so it just happened in front of our house, PSCNG paved our street and there's some issues with the curb. So we sent it into DPW and they replied and said that they've passed it on to PSCNG. But we don't know how to find out what they're doing.
Street components, when they do it, they pave.
Yeah.
And they some, send somebody out to do curving and, and thinning out. And then they send out another crew to Lansing, you know, put a new grass. That's what they will do, so.
Sure, sure, no, so I'm just wondering, like, if we wanted to find out what's happening with it, do we contact PSC? Or do we wait for DPW to get back?
DPW, contact them, that's my understanding.
And they said they did, they said they passed it on to PSCNG. So I'm just trying to get, yeah, just trying to.
I would call PSCNG and ask them.
Call them.
If they, yeah, I, I mean, we had the same issues over by Circle. A few things happened here and there and people were, were going directly to PSCNG after, after we, it was brought up to the borough. Borough brought it to PSCNG.
Okay.
And they worked with them directly.
Okay.
And they got them done quicker by contacting them directly.
Okay, great, so maybe we could put their phone number on the website too, so. It underneath community project update, go to PSCNG. And, and they actually, that was something that was really cool, we have.
The foreman.
We have direct contact, contact information there. Yeah, I did try to email that person once and then I never heard back, so. Anyway, I'll keep plugging away. Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Yeah, Mike, you should have been here before, you gave a whole presentation on the pickleball.
You did, I'm sorry, I missed you. Okay, well, my name's Mike Bamer, I live at sixteen Brooks, I drive. And I wanted to clarify some of the statements that I made last week, give a little more insight, but.
You don't like pickleball? Is that what you're?
That I'm not going to say.
Good.
But I was going to say, you know, I'm, I'm certainly not aiming to make all the tennis courts dual purpose, right? Far from it, just paint, not like Madison or Westfield, just painting lines on maybe a few of the tennis courts. I'll suggest that to, that the recreation department would make the final recommendation on accommodating pickleball. So I talked to Allison Joan Smith, our rec department director. And she said there were three issues, one being the high school tennis, one being the tennis summer camps, and the third being the town tennis players. I think all of these can be addressed by rules like Berkeley Heights has made to basically say, you know, pickleball players maybe don't, they certainly would not get preference over the high school tennis. High school tennis comes first. The fourth issue though, that she mentioned was the preference of the athletic director. I suppose if I was the athletic director, my preference would be not to put lines there too. But I, I think looking at the big picture, we have to think of all the residents in town. She also told me something that I was unaware of. Apparently, they have offered pickleball classes for, since two thousand fifteen. So that means eight years of pickleball classes. My rough calculations, and these are very, very rough, of two sessions per quarter, three quarters per year, because they, we don't do it in the summer, roughly ten to fourteen players per session.
A lot of repeats.
It's on repeats, yeah, sure, yeah, yeah, I repeated two times this year because I liked it so much, yeah. But roughly sixty players a year, I think that's on the low side. Then you talk about how many years, we're talking, I think, well over five hundred players.
So Mike, if I may just interject, I, I, your passion was heard loud and clear.
Yeah.
We, we know the, the popularity of the sport. We have a, a, a very, very strong athletic department, I mean, Community Activities Department by Allison Smith here. So you're right, she's doing a wonderful job. And I'll, I'll just summarize real quick what you missed. We are applying for a grant this, this evening that's going to help us hopefully fund new pickleball courts that'll be developed. We talked about that. As far as the solution of striping or re, or leveraging our existing tennis facility or a court maybe on that facility and striping that, she's actively looking into that. So what I asked for tonight, and what we talked about at the council, a, a number of members said that they agree that we not only should explore a long-term solution, which has been worked on for quite some time, which they're actively working on, but also something a little quicker, right, to have something a, a quicker fix. So we're approaching it on two angles. In fact, I, I made the, I extended the offer this evening and hopefully everyone else concurs, that at the next August meeting, we'll have representation from our Community Activities Department here to address the specific things that you're going over with us as well right now. But we want to get it done too, I think, I think there's, there's, I mean, if I'm speaking out of turn, please let me know. But here you are loud and clear, I look forward to getting in one of these next classes that we're talking about. In fact, we also announced that the addition of additional classes, two more. So a total of six morning and one evening sessions are going to happen. Once I take that class, I look forward to playing you, how about that?
All right, great.
Good, look forward to seeing you on the pickleball court.
Then first, then I apologize for coming late, I.
And I'm saying it to you because we're excited to and we're trying to do everything you're asking for.
Can I make two more points though?
Okay, I was just going to say that the Community Activity Department is definitely expediting the planning process and looking at a variety of things to make permanent solutions as quickly as possible.
Great, thank you, thank you. But a few more points here, and I'll, I'll make it brief because I know these meetings can be long. But so right now, after the spring classes, there's probably about, I make, I got a contact list of thirty-five people who were playing in the spring. We're now trying to play Thursday mornings at Tatlock Field in Summit. There's about ten to twelve of us show up, but we have a problem, a couple of problems actually. Number one, we can't reserve courts because we're not Summit residents. Number two, when we do go there and get on the courts, if somebody has reserves, they kick us off. So, and then we have a lot of unhappy people, which I don't think then, you know, people start grumbling and saying, how come we don't have courts in the province? And then the last point, and I think this, this is the most obvious and I can't believe I didn't say it last week because I didn't think about it. But let's say you put lines down on a pickleball court or on some tennis courts, so you have dual-purpose courts and nobody shows up to play pickleball, or very, very few. Taking those, those lines off, I think, would be really, really cheap compared to building, you know, new pickleball courts, which I obviously would love, but you know, it could, it could perhaps just save the town thousands of dollars. And I apologize that I didn't say.
Actually, interesting, going back to your last point, I've been in communication with Allison back and forth and she showed me a huge list of places where pickleball is available. So maybe we can try to get that list published somewhere so everybody can see. So if you can't go to this place, go to that place in the meantime. But again, we are looking to expedite as soon as possible, but that would be a resource for you guys to look at.
Yeah, I have, I, she gave me a copy of that list.
Yes.
But unfortunately, most of the places on that list, you're either required to be a resident of that town or it's private, like the, like say, for example, the Strand in Chatham that you have to pay for. So I think there is one in Union. I think it's a county park down there that might have two courts, I've never been to it, but, so it, I have the list somewhere in here and it looks real impressive.
Yeah, it was, it was a big list, I'm surprised.
Yeah, yeah, but it unfortunately isn't too useful. So, but I thank you for all of your time and I really appreciate your support and interest.
Thank you, thank you for your input.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else wish to address council? Seeing no one, it declared public comments closed. I need a motion for item twenty sixteen.
I'll second it.
Brokaw, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Kaminsky.
Aye.
This is Jeff Roy.
Yes.
Mr. Cogan.
Yes.
This is McKnight.
Yes.
Okay, I need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Resolution establishing July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three is the date and eight thirty-five PM is the time. And the municipal center is a place for the holding of a special session of the mayor and council of the borough of Providence to discuss legal matters involving Joseph Di Perisi lawsuit.
Now I saw movement?
Yes.